And we're still wanting to then jump to the 2-1-2 and talk about our, what would be, if you wanted to save it and you wanted to keep the donations at 20,000 and determine how you're going to break that up, we can do that. Or if you would like to add the $6,243 to the funds available total and break up the 26 to 43, we can do that.
I would move that we don't donate anything. We have a huge deficit.
Well, we can't make any motions if this is anybody who can discuss it.
Yeah, alright, fine. I would like to suggest that we donate nothing, because we don't have the money to do this.
We have 20,000 set aside for donations, but we could use that 20,000 and apply it to chip seals or road improvements and have 80. So, other thoughts?
I think he makes a good point.
I agree. I think we'll have some real disappointed people around here. Last year I did get quite a bit more for some different places, but this is what, we still need to keep our Prairie Hills going. And Shadco's working to make us money actually, in our 2-1-2, the boys and girls fund to keep our kids off the street.
I'm confused, did you agree with not spending any, or?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought you said I agree after he said that.
No, I agree that we need to...
Three people have agreed that maybe we need to think about making donations or...
Well, the three people agreed, but I'm trying to say I don't, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said agreed, that's why I asked.
No, she doesn't.
No, I do not agree with the fact that we do have other responsibilities.
I like the, I don't know, to me, the 20,000 was there, and even if we're operating on deficit, that happens year after year anyway, and that's, it is goodwill, it's, all of these things benefit the city. To go to zero, to me, would be a little extreme.
What about maybe, maybe we're shrinking it, we've gone from a lot, we're gonna go to 20 this year with the idea that we, that none of these people depend on us to stay open, they just can't do that, because next year, we may not have the money to give them. Maybe we eke it out this year because they're expecting it, but cut back on everybody so they'll know, "We can't support you, we can't keep you in business." We'd like to, but we just don't have the money to do it.
That's good. What's the root problem? Why is there such a large deficit? What is the reason?
There's not a really large deficit.
Do you wish revenue became without any businesses?
No, it's not percent wise, it's not...
A shrinking column?
Maybe we can figure that out later, but right now, we just gotta figure this out.
Yeah, and I, we don't have a large deficit, we have some one-time expenses, like roof repairs, that we don't have the revenue to offset for this year. But we did, while we were preparing this skeleton of a budget, have 20,000 set aside to give to donations. We could apply that somewhere else if we don't do any, or we could divvy up that 20,000 between these that requested, or we could keep looking for more to give them more.
Miss De, out of curiosity, for 2016, how did the final numbers turn out? Was there actually a deficit for '16?
In what fund? Because yes, we had...
No, overall, in like, this big overall picture, when you were going back to the general fund, the revenue and all the expenses, the 104,000 deficit that you were showing, or projected in '18?
That's for '18, yeah.
How did '16 actually?
Um, let me go pull my, I thought it worked.
And I, I just need, if it was a negative or if it was positive?
No, it wasn't a negative.
Well, you, I mean, I read what you understood.
We had funds for things like brands and stuff, so it's really, I don't know that's a bad...
I'm in favor of having donations, if we can afford it, if we can find money for it. I don't think we're there yet to know what the deficit is going to be, we haven't looked at all of the departments to figure out where we can, if we agree with the budget that they proposed to us, or if we want to make some changes to it, I go back to the $23,000 for a retaining wall. When I think of $23,000 for a retaining wall, I have some severe reservations for that, so if we didn't do that, then that's $23,000 that goes back in, that would reduce that overall, you know, deficit.
This number?
It's not just for the retaining wall, though? That was part of the park's plan to, to spend some money on Welcome Park.
Yeah, there was a bouldering wall also, and landscaping, and the gazebo.
Okay, but again, that's the conversation I'd like to have, you know, before we figure out, what are we willing to, are we willing to have a higher deficit, or are we willing to not have any? But until we see what, what we're willing to accept as far as an overall budget, and know what that's gonna be compared to projected revenue, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves to figure out what we're gonna stick somewhere.
Well, but we'll let Marty at least speak, and say how he feels. You know, it is what I wanted, you know, if you're gonna leave here in 10 minutes, I wanted to hear from you, how you felt about this issue.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that.
I'm willing to come back if, for you, you know, if there's another night, I'm willing to waive the 50 bucks for that meeting, to come back so that everybody has...
We don't get paid any of that.
We do still have a number of departments in our general fund to go through on a Thursday at 12:00.
I would come back, too. I'm gonna tell this another night, rather than try to rush into this and not give you an opportunity to be part of all of it all.
And let this be the very last thing, and get through as far as we can, the general fund stuff today and schedule another day.
But we can still get through, we don't have to leave at 12:00, we can get through as much as...
We can, there's only a lot of minutes left, but...
I think that's a great idea, I'd love to do that.
We seem to be denied to come back.
Yeah, before he goes, can we talk then about, I was looking, expecting that we may run over another day to schedule this, and I would like to avoid the rally week, the, but that, so the week of August, or July 31st, August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, and 4th, is anybody available, any of those days? Rally week is the first full week in August, right? So it runs from the 7th through the 11th? I think so. So we probably wanna avoid, just because of the busyness of everyone during that time, so it'd be sometime during that next week.
Our company will be the 7th, on the 7th.
The 7th, and we'd wanna avoid that week.
Yeah, we'd let it also be, you know, the 7th.
Yeah, so we can do it, you know, the 31st, the 32nd, and 3rd, or 4th.
Yeah.
And I think we could get the rest done in just one day. Is a Wednesday good for everyone? Wednesday's not good for you?
Tell me what day you're talking about.
Thursday would, would be for me.
3rd, August the 3rd?
Yeah.
Five o'clock?
Do mornings work for everybody?
No.
No, I work.
We won't have as much to do, would a later evening or earlier be better for you in your schedule?
It's not earlier.
So Thursday the 3rd at 5:00, to finish up? We'll save this till the end?
Thursday the 3rd at 5:00.
Thursday the 3rd at 5:00.
Ready to go for anything else tonight?
Yeah, we'll keep going through what we can so far, we will get as far as we can, because then maybe we won't need a three-hour meeting on Thursday the 3rd. Okay, alright, so we'll keep going.
I think your next Thursday meeting is gonna have a lot of discussion, except we're quite surprised at your pain.
Right, but hopefully, we'll get through most of the...
The expenses?
Yeah, and then it'll just be the good discussion around this. We'll know where we're at.
What page are we on, Miss De?
Uh, we should be at snow removal on page 12, if we go back to where we were at, to the general fund. Right, does anybody know how much it's gonna snow in 2018? That would really be helpful. So, we have projected 19,000, and again, this is one of those departments that we attempted to determine, based on all of these people's wages all together, how much we should stick in each one to come up with the same total. Maybe not the best science, but best way we can figure out to tackle this. 19,000 salaries and wages, 1,500, payroll taxes, 1,150 from retirement, all workman's comp, group insurance, and unemployment comes out of the other departments. We have 4,200 for vehicle repairs, 1,800 for equipment repairs, 10,000 for supplies, that'd be sand and salt, 100 for minor tools, and 1,800 for gas, oil, and diesel for 39, 550 for the snow removal budget. Is everybody comfortable with that one?
Yep.
I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the amount for sand and salt.
10,000, because we spent so much this year?
I would like to see that go up a little, just to make sure that we have enough on hand.
What, 11 or 12?
12 makes sense.
Well, that's fine with me.
Okay?
Yep.
First one going up, takes us back. Down a little bit, but we'll heckle you too bad for that. Seems like a very reasonable, looking historically at the expenses, and we've already spent 11,800 so far this year, although, oh, we do have some on hand for the remainder of the year.
Yeah.
So 12,000 puts us to 41, 550, for snow removal.
We have different ones, one one, what?
I just changed it.
She just changed?
I know, but it's...
We changed 10 to 12.
Doesn't come up for that, when we added, yeah, 39, 550.
And we added 2,000, so it goes up to 41, 550.
Okay, got it.
Alright. Street lighting, we contract out our lighting repair, we have 15,000 budgeted for that. Some things, they cover in the contract, some things we have to pay for ourselves. We have 2,000 for the lighting repair performed in-house, 500 for supplies and materials, and the big cost there is 83,000 for utilities.
So this is a new contract?
Uh, no, it's the same one that we have right now.
15, right, we took it out in 15, and we're gonna keep the same contract, alright. And we've only paid 17% of that this year?
Oh, it looks like it, although that seems low, so I'm wondering if they're behind in their billing a little bit, because it is a monthly maintenance contract.
It's gonna be a big bill.
Depends on the work they do, they charge us extra, for certain not everything's covered under their contract.
You might just check on that, Miss De.
I'm trying to pull it up right now. Uh, we paid 1,135 dollars in July for lighting maintenance, but in part of that, they repaired a stoplight. We paid 500, it looks like 530 dollars and 88 cents is the standard, and then, depending on what they end up doing, we could have additional charges.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seems like a lot of additional charge.
Yeah, so 530 times 12 is 6300.
Yeah.
You'd like to see that number drop? I mean, you don't know, if a street light goes out, or a light pole gets hit, and the driver doesn't stop and pay for it, and we can lower it if you want, but again, just like the snow removal, if something comes out...
Take it down like 5,000, because that's an awful lot more, and you haven't used that much the other years.
Does everyone, we, this lighting maintenance contract didn't exist in those prior years. Does everybody agree with taking that down 10,000? Still gives you about 3700 for additional, even though we had one bill for one stoplight of 1,100?
I'd say maybe just to 10...
You just take it down to 10,000, you don't have to take it, you don't have to take it down 5,000, just 10.
Yeah, that's what I said, take out 5.
Oh, take out.
Yep, and that gives you then 3700 dollars for any additional charges. Drop that one down. Oop, I just almost made it 100,000. Drop that down to 10, for then a total of 95,500. There, George spent a little extra money, but we saved a little.
True.
We're moving along now. Okay, street cleaning, 16,000 projected, 1250, 1100, 7,000 for equipment repairs, that's significantly lower, because one of the things that we're asking for is a new street sweeper. One year worth of five-year financing for a new street sweeper, the estimated expense is 35,000, 1,500 for gas, oil, and diesel. We need a new street sweeper.
We do.
We can buy it upfront, we can take a look at this lease option, taking it out, we're not gonna have clean streets.
Buying it front would be like 180 grand?
35 times 5, gets us close, yeah, that expense.
I don't think we can swing that, but, if I could at least, we could.
Thanks, Marty.
See you later. See you later, Marty.
So are we good with this one?
Hi, Marty.
Thank you, Marty.
Street cleaning, no changes, 61, 850?
Looking at the equipment repairs, what other equipment repairs come out of street cleaning?
Just the street sweeper.
So if we're leasing one, we're responsible for the repairs?
Brooms, the self-defeating equipment that's part of it, they have to replace that, and we would be responsible for replacing those.
Okay.
Nuance and complaints, that's another budget that Kim is responsible for.
One other, the leased one is leased the new one?
Yes.
For the street sweeper?
Yes.
Thanks.
5,075 dollars is what she thought she would need, 5,000 for repairs and maintenance, which would address localized cleanups with collaboration of property owners. She carries a smaller stick than Alaska, likes to spend a little bit more, remember we tore down that building? Yes.
I have a question, does she really need 5,000 in that?
It's significantly lower, as you get complaints about properties and what we decide to do, she did drop it from her 2017 projected, but she thought 5,000 could do it, but you can make any changes to that?
I think she probably could use that. She's been doing an awful lot, and like, if we don't back her up, we're not...
A lot of that are the, with those things that she hauls places, and then they fill, but it still seems like a lot, if we're trying to save money.
We take legal action where...
She spent, what, 570 and 16?
She doesn't spend...
And what, she hasn't spent anything this year?
She hasn't.
Nothing.
No, you've approved, though, a couple actions where she might be bringing some stuff in.
And she said tonight, she's bringing another one in front of us on Monday before we go.
Yeah, I'll look that one up.
Okay.
And I think another problem is too, she has difficulty finding wanted contractors to mow the, the yards that are out of, so that's, that's been...
So that might come out of that, that would come out of that?
Yeah.
Alright, I would like to try to get through the expenses and the rest of the general funds, I know it's 8 o'clock, so I just wanna put that out there, are y'all comfortable continuing to just get through the next few? We got a couple big ones, a couple not so big ones, I think that we should be able to wrap it up in 30 to 40 seconds.
I think we should go into people say they want to stop.
Okay, let's check in. Alright, so we've had some discussion lately about the airport manager and transferring that position to full-time, and I want you to know that this budget that's in front of you, that's projected, does include salaries and wages to have him full-time in 2018. Just because you passed this budget with this amount, doesn't mean you're agreeing to that, but different than the sheet that we gave you for airport, we have the increased amount with the airport alternative of him going full-time.
Didn't we vote on this the other night, not to make him full-time?
But that was for this, that was effective now.
Effective in August.
So, this is for 2018. Yeah, so we can change this amount to, and say, "No, we're not even considering that, we can leave it for a future discussion to consider that change effective January 1, 2018. If you don't approve it, then we just have an overage in salaries and wages." But just so that you're aware, what you have in front of you to decide on tonight for projected budget does include that position going to full-time.
And I guess my recommendation would be that we do reconsider and make that a full-time position at the end of the year. The chairman of the airport board came before you as a council and requested that, noting all the increased responsibilities that it has had as a result of construction, the mining that's coming up, and so forth. But again, that's, you know, your decision.
One of the ways that, after the information we received from Ed after the last council meeting, that we can both lower this total budget amount and our projected financial impact, is that he's not interested in the city's insurance. We had 7,020 estimated for an annual expense for that. If we allow that position to go full-time, and we think outside of just Ed being in that position, that's an expense you may incur, but knowing that he's not interested in that, we could take this amount out and lower the 2018 proposed budget and still leave the full-time position in there. Yes.
I'm not talking about Ed or anything, I'm talking about, wanna, wanna talk about the position. I don't see how we can justify full-time in the winter for someone to go out and clear the runways. I mean, it's, it's not Ed, it's not, hey, he's doing a good job, all of our employees are doing a good job. We can't really say that. If, if Pete Lean needs supervising, well then, we would have this money in there, and we could make him full-time if it becomes necessary, but to project ahead and start on January the 1st for something that might happen in the spring, or we don't know when it's gonna happen, I, I can't really see that. I talked to Ed, I know what he wants, paid vacation and sick leave is why he wants this. And I don't know that that's really, you know, a reason to do something. I mean, if we have the money, and he's needed out there, once, if Pete Lean starts, we'll have money from Pete Lean that would pay for this. We wouldn't be paying for this out of a budget that really doesn't make any money, it's just an expense to the city.
Well, it makes money in a certain way.
21,000 a year.
I'll comment on that, too, because I, Ed is full-time actually until November, so it doesn't really matter. And I did talk to Ed about this, too, and, you know, if he doesn't go full-time in January, he still will be full-time, I think in March, is that when he starts out there? Do you know?
I can't remember.
I think that's what he said. So I mean, we have three months, probably.
It'll be a few more than that.
Yeah, but, um, there's a lot more going on out there than what you realize. And I don't know if you've been out there or not, Caroline, but there's stuff on the weekends.
Don't be the winner.
You would, whatever time, you would be scheduled.
32, 32 hours, or 30, or...
Well, he's worked full-time now on all the page sheets that I've seen since he's been here, is a 40-hour week, so. Plus, so many times, he's overtime, because he gets called out to open hangars and...
And that's overtime. We pay him overtime for that, if he's out there 40 hours a week.
That's, that's, within, out there 40 hours a week, so...
Where they make up the difference, is in the winter or something, when there's dogfight flights, or?
Right.
Well, there's a, you know, and I, I don't have an exact number of flights, I'm sure it will decrease somewhat, but the airport has to remain open for emergencies, it has to remain open for medevac, and, and so, you know, he's got those responsibilities that he still gets, gets called out for.
And he does.
The maintaining of the equipment that he uses, the, the updating of the, the information that's provided to the pilots, and so forth, that all those duties have to be, have to be done, but...
He's on call.
He, he's on call, and, and the point is, is that we've got an airport manager that's motivated enough that he will drop what he's doing anytime that he's called, and he'll, he'll get it, he'll get out there.
You're paid, if you're on call, that's your job.
You can be paid to be on call.
I mean, doctor, as long as Indian chief, you take call, and you're supposed to, that's, that's your job.
He does get paid when he does get called out.
He does get paid when he does, he does do that.
And we're not talking 24/7 service, so all of these things could be called at any time, and right now, we have an airport manager who's willing to come in at any time that any of these calls come up.
And there's, there...
Otherwise, we'd be staffing at 24/7.
And as my understand, in the past, that hasn't always been, you know, the case, so the traffic count is increasing, we've got hangars full, so there's, just by virtue of the amount of airplanes that we have, there's more traffic. People do use those in the winter as well as they use them in the summertime, so...
And where, and he's full-time until when?
November 1st.
November 1st, and then, so he's off three months, is all that he's part-time?
I think he goes till April 1, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it's, and I've been in the full cycle, but...
So that probably Pete Lean's not gonna be working during that time, they were a spring...
Pete Lean will be, who knows when they'll be starting, we're going to try to get a meeting next week to try to expedite, because he went up to the, the AI meeting in Spearfish, and that was one of the topics we would discuss, to state out with F A A, so we're trying to expedite the environmental process and get that started as soon, so we don't know for sure when it'll start, but, but hopefully, that will be sped up within six months or so, that we'll be, be starting on that.
And when that does...
How many hours is, how many hours is Ed during the winter?
Do we have any idea what his hours?
Yeah, he goes part-time, so 20 hours.
20 hours, yeah.
And with that, you know, and there's other contracts, and monitoring of the security, the leases that we have for grazing and so forth, but, you know, there's just a lot of things that, that all in that responsibility, that we just don't see that he takes on to do, and it's, it's, you know, it's, again, up to you.
I don't have to be.
We will have a, it's up to this council, and what I'm saying, and, and the point is, the airport will be managed well if he's part-time, it'll be managed well if he's full-time, because that's just his, you know, his work ethic and character, but the airport board has looked at it, these are pilots that are familiar with the operation out there, and they have made that recommendation, and I, you know, trust...
But of course, they'd be advocates for him, you know, that's to be expected.
Well, absolutely, because he serves them, serves them well, but they also know the specifics that are going on out there, but, you know, I mean, like I said, the airport will function, and function well. We won the best airport in South Dakota with him being part-time.
Medium-sized airport, right.
Right, and, you know, and that's a big, big honor, and...
And the rest of it can do that part-time.
If I could share, when we do get the Pete Lean and son's mining contract and that goes through, we often talk about expenses and we forget about the means of finance. When that goes through, we will have extra money that we have not had in our budget that will be solely for the purpose of our airport. Until that time, spending that money comes out of the means of finance we currently have. So we, we are anticipating a shift in the near future, although, although we've been talking about this for a long time, and there's some steps that we don't control that have to be taken, but our airport will see an increase in revenue as soon as that mining contract gets started.
Then there are plans, you know, to increase the amount of traffic, to increase the, to complete the parallel taxiway, the full-length runway, and so, we'll have a first, first-rate aircraft. One of the things that the airport does need to, to do is to get Jet A, we don't have Jet A, one of the few airports in this, in, that are of our size, that doesn't have Jet A, and that's, that's important, but aspect, if more and more turbo props are getting, using that, that type of fuel, we will be able to service more, more airports here, in Halesmore, so...
That'd be a fairly lucrative comp for the city, that gravel and sand being a lot there.
Yeah, it, it will be, and probably could have been better if we got it paid by the tongue, but that wasn't part of the...
Is there gonna be any impact with extra truck traffic and stuff around the airport?
Well, there, there will be, and that's one of the reasons that we need to have someone there monitoring that, to ensure that, you know, those, all the security...
They say there's plenty of rules around airports nowadays.
And, and the other part is, you know, weed control, lives, the wildlife abatement programs, all of that has to be monitored to make sure that we're not violating what those FAA requirements are, and, and it takes someone that's dedicated to keep people watch over it, but again, that's after the, you know, the contract is born.
The discussion I'd like to continue having around this is that... The discussion I'd like to continue having around this is that, you know, three departments within the city that are going to generate a lot of passionate conversation is the golf course having a sponge in the airport. Depending on where...
Absolutely.
Where you rely on that. Those are the three areas that are going to generate a lot of conversation. I appreciate that, from a public work standpoint, because the Pete Lean contract is something that we've been following, that conversation, it's gaining momentum. And that's because of, you know, city hall staff and everybody that's helping with that. But we don't know when it's going to happen. And until it does, we don't have any additional, you know, money coming in. The airport's budget right now is ninety-two thousand dollars. If the contract happens, then for ten years, the city gets a hundred thousand dollars a year. That's significant. Does that mean then that the expectation is the airport's budget would go from ninety-two thousand dollars to a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars a year? I don't think the public's going to allow that to happen to any degree. So it could be argued that the city wouldn't need to spend anything out of their own budget. The Pete Lean and Sons contract would increase the airport's budget by eight thousand simply over what it is now. The risk in the city doing that, as I see it, is that ten years down the road then, when that contract stops, now the council's going to have to re-approach everybody and say, oh, by the way, you forgot that that was only going to cover ten years. So I think there's a larger discussion that has to happen around all of this and what level would this decrease, if any? And part of the argument, part of the reasoning for a full-time manager is to manage Pete Lean and Sons, because whatever. So what I've understood, the suggestion is, is that we go ahead and build this in with the understanding that it hasn't been approved. But if the council's inclination at the time is to go ahead and prove it, then it's built in. We don't have to, we can do it if that's what the council wants to do. But by building this in, we're not saying we agree to the...
Yeah, no, that should be...
Is that the conversation we're having?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing too, you know, I think part of that hundred thousand dollars a year has got to be targeted for capital improvements. The increased hangars, it will increase our revenue. The increased parallel taxiway, it will increase our capability. And the other improvements that can make more viability.
It has to be spent at the airport. So it wouldn't increase the airport to a hundred ninety-two thousand next year because we have a hundred thousand of capital improvements. We just have to make sure that the money we collect for the mining at the airport is spent on the airport.
Right. But again, that's the conversation I think we need to have, is that would the city continue kicking in their ninety-two thousand to the Pete Lean hundred ninety-two? My opinion is no. You probably find some people who say, well, yeah, we can build those hangars that we've been worried about. You know, we've got ninety-two thousand extra dollars. Let's go ahead and spend it out there so the city increases to a hundred ninety-two rather than a hundred. I wouldn't support that, but I expect that will be the conversation that we'll have. To what degree will the city reduce their contribution once, if Pete Lean and Sons kicks in? And it hasn't. The city's been kicking around for four years now?
It's not a sure thing.
No?
So that conversation, the bigger conversation that Bob's talking about and the approval of the airport manager going full-time either at the beginning of the year or at a later date when the activity increases out there, is a conversation we can have at another time, as long as we can all agree that we're comfortable with the projected 2018 budget, knowing that we have those numbers built in there should we choose to do that. So if we're comfortable getting past these first ones, if everyone's kind of okay with that being the theme for 2018 in our budget proposal, not making any of those decisions yet till we have that bigger conversation, but budgeting for it, so we have it in our plan. Are you comfortable with that?
Bob is saying the same.
Part of that discussion was though, whether we keep the seven thousand for insurance or we remove it, because Ed doesn't want it.
If you make that position full-time, and just because Ed is the manager now and he does not want it and you drop that out of there, let's say six months from now, Ed decides he's going elsewhere and you have to hire a new airport manager that is going to want that group insurance, you no longer have seven thousand dollars in there for group insurance because you've taken it out of the budget.
I agree. That's why I'd hire someone that doesn't want any insurance.
That's fixed expense, really.
We may also have forty thousand dollars in salary due, you know, I mean, just based on the negotiations of hiring that. But you're right, that's a good, you know, good point.
So since we are leaving it in there with the anticipation that it may be a full-time position, are you comfortable with leaving all those numbers there for now for budgeting purposes? Knowing that we'll have a bigger discussion later about?
Yeah.
Good.
What kind of tractor does he have that needs two eighteen-dollar tires?
Uh, that John Deere can't find, wasn't it?
Is it a big? Is it a ten?
I'm the worst person to ask about it, quite frankly.
As Ed understands that we left it in there, not voting in any way that we're going to approve his position.
It's a John Deere.
Uh, this? Oh, that was the one that was gifted, that's not the tractor. Uh, five-five-nine-six-W-K-S-I-H tractor.
Did they not have a John Deere tractor out there? Maybe they don't have that.
I don't know.
Yeah, here's what we have for, we know that they have the trailer. We know that they have this tractor. And we know that they have this plow sander and a truck. So we haven't gotten there yet, but we're on our way down there to his question. Professional services, we have it ten thousand. That includes weed spraying, porta-potties, and Cheyenne sanitation services. Weed spraying is the big piece of that. Building repairs, a thousand dollars. Equipment, thirty-six...
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
He said he's used two percent, two-point-six-one so far. I think a thousand dollars is too much.
Oh, I don't. The windows only replaced out there.
But a thousand won't do that.
No, but their work amount...
Does he have that noted, that that's what that's for?
No, but we do have some requests for some more than what's in here and he's anticipating some revenue. We can talk about that when we get down there. But no, he doesn't have new windows or anything noted in there. But building repairs historically have been around that mark, so...
But he spent twenty-six dollars this year.
This year, but in 2016, he spent eight-hundred and eight. And, you know, maybe he's waiting till after he's paid taxes.
Okay.
And he's, yeah.
Comfortable leaving that number then?
Probably not, but we'll leave it.
Okay. Six thousand for equipment, which is the new tractor tires and other equipment. Everyone comfortable with that number?
He had that part, right? Uh huh. I'm not comfortable with some of these numbers down here.
Okay, we'll get there. Supplies, we have twenty-three-twenty-one, one dollar. That's approximately fourteen-twenty-one for a five-hundred-and-sixty-gallon fuel tank for diesel fuel. So he does not need to go into town to get that, but can have it delivered. Four hundred dollars for janitorial supplies. Five hundred dollars for minor tools.
Okay, four hundred dollars for janitorial supplies. He spent nineteen percent or ninety-six dollars this year. Why does he need four hundred dollars?
Historically, he's spent four, three-hundred-and-seventy, seven, fourteen, and five-ten. Maybe he had some leftover stuff from the end of 2016 that he's been using up at the beginning of this year. I'm not sure, but we did drop that number down to four hundred from five the previous year.
Okay. I don't know, I mean, he doesn't, it's a...
He's very modest in his spending. He's very responsible when he does send the city's money and he's very modest with what he...
I think he is about some things, but you've got, you know, a nineteen percent, seven percent, three percent, two percent. You know, you've got some numbers here that I think are, it looks kind of, it looks padded to me.
Well, if you're recommending any decrease in amounts, just let me know.
Well, the next one, he, the, what is it?
Minor tools.
I know he needs money for that. And you did drop it, so, you know, from eight hundred to five hundred, but that's still a pretty big cushion for his minor tools, whatever those are going to be out there.
Yeah. And I don't think he knows what he has, but historically, it's been a little over that. So I feel like five hundred is a pretty reasonable number. But if anyone has any recommendations. Agricultural supplies, he has it twelve hundred.
What is that for?
Let me look historically. It looks kind of, I don't know if he has seed.
That looks padded to me.
Agricultural.
But he's spent almost twelve thousand in fourteen on that.
Didn't we allow him to do some farming that didn't pan out? And so we didn't continue to do that? I know last year during budget time, he'd asked for a bunch of money because he wanted to plant something. And then we determined that the airport shouldn't be in the farming business, if I remember correctly, the conversations from last year.
That's right, yeah.
Sometimes I remember things off, so please correct me if I'm wrong.
Is this maybe he's going back into farming again?
Uh, I'm going to look and tell you what historically has been purchased out of that line item.
Does that mean for spraying for weeds or anything?
Uh, no. More in chemicals. So Roundup and weed killer and spraying outside of the fence area. It's primarily what's come out of that agriculture budget, so.
I suggest you drop that. It's just, excuse me, Georgia, can I finish talking?
Well, just a minute.
We need to have... It's why we have to go too late.
Yeah, because the weeds were already started really bad and that was the biggest problem we had with that fence.
We have the ten thousand for weed spraying, I think.
I think that his, I think the ten thousand is per contract.
Yeah.
And this is his individual spot spraying that he does that gets missed by the contractor.
And we also had golfers or something.
I would still suggest we come to a thousand on that.
Currently, year-to-date, he really has not spent much out of that, but in fact, eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. So...
That was budgeted at three hundred dollars last year and was increased four times that.
Yeah, that's just...
And so far this year, there's been nine dollars spent?
Yep.
I guess I'm kind of wondering if it's going to go down to about five.
Years ago, they were...
For most practical purposes, for weed control and so forth, it is.
I don't know about that. There were some issues.
Unless he's gone out there to do some soil sterilizing or total eradication, reta-retation, you're not going to get good weed control at this point in time.
They have to be really careful about early birds coming in to eat the seed. And I'm not sure, what have you got?
This was his budget request for the twelve hundred out because he didn't do the Excel spreadsheet for us. He just typed something up. And he has chemical sprays. He's looking to use the city's golf course sprayer and buy some additional product to apply. So that is the reason, I'm guessing, for the increase.
I didn't think he sprayed though this time of year.
Chemical sprays. Well, this would be for 2018.
I mean, the weeds are dead.
And there are certain weeds that you do spray in the fall.
So I think the increase is because he's looking to take a more proactive approach. There's weed control. Are we okay leaving it or do we want to lower it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think he needs to leave it.
Gas, oil, and diesel, twenty-five hundred. He's about forty-nine percent on target for his last year number, so that seems reasonable. Most signs, two hundred. Travel and conference, he has six hundred dollars. The annual airport conference is what he typically attends every year. Telephone, two thousand. Electricity, eighty-six hundred. Propane, we have forty-five hundred. Historically, he's used twenty-four percent. He's used two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars this year. It was way too much projected in 2017, so that number dropped down to forty-five hundred for 2018. And that brings us to a ninety-two thousand, eighty-nine dollar and ninety cent budget for the airport. We didn't change anything in there? Ready to move on to cemeteries?
Yep.
I would just like to add one comment. There's been a consistent theme in the questions that some of us are asking. And when we look at, we're, you know, seven months into the year and only three percent of the projected amount has been spent. You know, if in the future, they could have, you know, some kind of reasoning behind that to help us look at it, okay, you know, that's an expense, that three hundred, we shouldn't be looking at the, you know, first quarter of the year would be twenty-five percent, by half of the year would be fifty percent. So if there's just an explanation to say, you're right, I haven't spent it all now because that's something I don't do until whenever, it would stop these questions on each one of these low percentages when the next year it's inflated, you know, we've only spent nine dollars this year and we want twelve hundred next year. So if they could help us with those kinds of things.
Absolutely duly noted. And if I will be more involved in all of the conversations with the department heads that are requesting that, I'll just bring a expenditure worksheet up to date and make sure that anytime we're not about fifty percent, that we have a conversation about what's going to happen.
And they can answer it.
Why?
And I think the only ones that really you can't reject are the repair ones. The repair areas, you know, if you do have anything great, you don't need to spend it. But I agree, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion, thank you, to do that. All right, we're going to move on to cemeteries. Cemeteries, we have forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars projected for salaries and wages, three thousand for the payroll taxes, two thousand for retirement, thousand for workers' comp, seventy-three hundred for group insurance, three hundred and sixty for unemployment, and eight hundred dollars for our South Republic insurance. Insurance, professional services is weed spraying. We have seven hundred dollars. Vehicle repairs, we have five hundred dollars. Equipment, a thousand. Street and walk repairs, seven hundred. Sewer and water repairs, four hundred. The explanation, planning to repair galvanized line in section K and convert to PVC for irrigation. Two hundred for fence tools, general fence repair, paint supplies. Ninety dollars for supplies, seventy-five for janitorial, three hundred and fifty for minor tools, two hundred for agricultural supplies, twelve hundred for gas, oil, and diesel, hundred and twenty-five for any signage, five hundred for electricity. Very modest budget, sixty-three thousand.
What are salaries and wages going up?
We, you, same thing that we talked about earlier. When we tried to determine the maintenance department and how we divvy up those wages, there is a seasonal employee that is shared apart, street cemetery. Hard to determine whether they'll spend their time. We try to allocate based on their time card the costs based on where they spend their time. All right. So we have moved on to page eighteen, rabies and animal control. We used to contract this and now we have a full-time employee. Salary position, twenty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-one forty-two, seventeen hundred, five seventy-five. John Wouchard does not participate in the city's insurance, but he does get the life insurance. Unemployment, hundred and forty, five hundred for insurance. Professional services includes the contracted amount we pay to barnyard, forty-five hundred dollars. We haven't received any indication that that's going to change in 2018 from the agreement we have now. This number can fluctuate due to animals that are impounded. Vehicle repairs, eight hundred.
Why is this going up, the minor tools? You know?
Um, I think it's because of year-to-date expenses. No, he's only spent eleven percent. It was nine hundred in 2017, so it actually went down. But it does look like according to...
Well, the budget is nine hundred.
Right. But what he spent so far this year in 2017, maybe that number can go down a little bit.
I don't know, did he specify anything? He's usually pretty good about that.
Very modest in his spending, so. If you'd like to see that number lowered, just shoot one out.
I don't know, he spent what?
Hundred and sixteen.
Six hundred and thirty-eight and fifteen. Maybe he's planning on something, I don't know.
No, he didn't indicate any, maybe expenses coming up.
Anyone have a thought on that?
Is it wife traps or something like that that he has to?
His traps are pretty old. I've used a couple of them. Maybe we should leave it there.
Comfortable leaving it? Eighteen hundred for gas, oil, and diesel, three hundred and ninety for cell phone. Total budget, forty-one, three eighty-seven. Recreation, so summer recreation programs funded out of this department. Twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred projected for salaries and wages. Twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred projected for salaries and wages. Twenty-one ninety-five for payroll taxes. Uh, workers' comp, seven hundred. Two forty-four for unemployment. Professional services, we have twelve hundred. Uh, two screen on the greens for five hundred dollar total and seven hundred dollars for umpires for baseball. When we get to that figure. Publishing, two hundred and fifty and two thousand for supplies with a thousand of that being earmarked for baseball and T-ball. Thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine.
Missed you.
Yep.
I'm gonna have to go.
Okay, we're just, we got a couple, well, the only other probably big, well, we got the Mueller Center. We already did the library, we got parks and then we're done. Besides this one. So parks and the Mueller Center.
Parks and the Mueller Center, we're done? And then come back for?
Can we come back and do those?
We can, it's up to you guys.
Let's do, we're getting.
Does everyone else agree?
I said no.
It's one person. Or do you wanna do?
I'm gonna do just like I said, I'm gonna stay till everybody's ready.
Okay, I'll catch up with you.
Any, you all wanna say what?
I'm not working all this, I cannot stay here.
Me too, I'll give you an update though.
All right.
This is one of the, you know, she took off work to come and be here and if she can stay a little longer, then I think we owe her the courtesy.
Sure, I'll give you any updates, Georgia, on any changes.
Yeah, I'm fine staying there.
Okay, I am too.
I wanna get this done.
I do want to do that too.
Okay, so this one should be pretty easy. It's our senior citizen center activities. We had two requests this year, we would fully fulfill both requests with the eight thousand dollars. Senior center asked for three and, uh, senior males asked for five.
Just for information, this has been, this is in here because it's not really considered a true donation. It's been around forever, this is a group that the city has supported.
Okay, uh, parks, so this would be a pretty big one. Sixty-two thousand, five hundred, um, parks salaries is another one in the maintenance department where we just try to do our best guess to determine, um, how much our summer seasonal help will spend in this department and then all these numbers are tied to that. A one full-time employee there, Bart Sig, it's paid out of Parks Department. Twenty-something year employee of the city. Unemployment insurance, five hundred and ten dollars, other insurance, forty-nine hundred. Professional services, the majority of that is weed spraying for parks and green spaces, we have nine thousand. Looking back, we've spent more. Uh, we've been a little more modest with our activities, um, for weed spraying in the last couple of years, but nine thousand, thought they could get it done in twenty eighteen with that figure. Vehicle repairs, twenty-one hundred. Building repairs, thirty-five hundred and that is to reconstruct a shed in Butler Park with a tin building. Seeing that they've spent money in the past, I wouldn't say all of that is dedicated for that, but a portion of that.
Tin building for what?
Reconstruct shed in Butler with tin building.
There's a little one up there.
Some from the Parks Committees and their master plans. Not sure exactly which building is identified.
That's what you're talking about with the, because they were talking about building that concession stand and having a shed attached to it. I don't know if that's what you're talking about there.
Aren't you on the question, Ben?
Well, that's why you can ask a question.
Isn't it in our notable budget expenses at the beginning?
Are you not sure what that is? So you want to cut? I wouldn't say I want to cut, but we're, we're coming back for another night. I think it certainly needs to be an item to, if, if we got through the Parks people and I'm not even sure what it is.
I was just looking through our notable budget expenses to see if it's listed in there. It's not either, so I can get more information on that one. Want me to highlight that one, Bob?
Yeah, would you?
Yep. Something we can come back and discuss. I'll get there. All right, and I'll make myself a note to get more information for you on that thirty-five hundred. We have spent forty-two percent of that budget this year without doing any big, um, reconstruction, so. Equipment, sixty-five hundred.
I have a, that's twenty-three percent this year.
Okay.
I know they can't project their equipment repairs, but.
I think we looked more historically.
Okay, sixty-two hundred.
And I think sometimes too, after using the equipment throughout the summer, the fall becomes the time when you do the repairs, sharpen the little blades and replace things.
Okay, thank you. Street and walk repairs, three thousand. Sewer water repairs, that's a big one for this year, it's budgeted at seven thousand. They're looking to provide irrigation at Brookside Park. And not all, seven thousand is for that, some of it's for the other repairs.
Something I didn't hear about that.
Six thousand of that is for the, um, projected irrigation at Brookside. Seven hundred for fence tools. Six hundred for clothing. Two thousand for janitorials.
I mean, those are another six percent, eight percent.
Where?
Uh, to fence tools and repairs, clothing.
Yeah, historically, they haven't spent that much in clothing either, but that's personal protective equipment and, um, shirts, so. Recommending a change to those numbers.
It'd be a lot cheaper.
I mean, this is parks, wouldn't they bought clothing for the kids and people that are gonna work at parks? Wouldn't that have already been purchased for this summer?
They get dirty though.
So they're buying, would be buying for next year maybe out of this budget?
That's a good, that's a good question.
Do we want to change those numbers at all or leave them where they're at?
No.
Janitorial supplies, two thousand. Minor tools, fifteen hundred. Agricultural supplies, seven fifty.
That's a lot this year.
Yeah. And it, you know, since they have gone significantly over in agricultural supplies, they may be hoarding some of those other budgets where the percentages are smaller to cover that.
Maybe.
Yeah. Uh, gas, oil and diesel, twenty-five hundred. Nine hundred in signs and they have earmarked a sign for Coldberg Park and Lower Chautauqua. Sixty-two hundred for electricity. Ten thousand for buildings. To picnic, to finish the picnic shelter at Brookside.
I think that those are some things we need to talk about that Bob brought up. That's on like a wish list and they got put into the budget, but, um, you know.
It's part of developing the plan, the tall grass plan.
I know, I know there's a plan, but still.
Yep.
You know, there are old streets and other departments that need money. And what have we given, the street, sixty thousand dollars to work on the streets?
Well, and they have fifteen thousand in their regular budget too.
Anyway, I do, those are things I'd like to look at later.
Okay.
That and the twenty-three thousand dollars for those.
I got those both highlighted. Uh, anybody from the Parks Committee or?
Shouldn't the bathroom be in there, the one at Brookside for seventeen?
We, yeah, we, we're building that bathroom. We want me to tell you where?
That's the shelter.
Expenses have been coming for that already this year and I can tell you when, where they've been paid out of, but it, the bathroom's been built and it's been expensed, so.
There's forty-two thousand there projected for that, I'm not.
Well.
Year-to-date though, for buildings, there hasn't, there, I mean, it's not showing anything as having been spent.
I'll tell you where it was paid out of in just a moment.
It's down the little path across from the plunge, I think. That little area nobody uses.
Two picnic tables?
Yeah.
Twenty-two thirty.
I think they're planning on beautifying it, because right now.
Like already they're planning to beautify it.
They're trying to get a trail through there too.
That's supposed to go down to Chautauqua, I think.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be on the other side of the plunge. The way it's been explained today.
I thought we got a grant for that path to Chautauqua, but I don't know what happened to it.
You got ten thousand.
The reason you don't see that expense in there is because it's been capitalized. So it's been removed from the expense in twenty sixteen and capitalized.
How much did it end up to you?
I'll tell you. So far, the Brookside bathroom.
We were told between seventeen and eighteen.
Hundred and twenty-three thousand, which at this point.
Bob, we were told between seventeen and eighteen it was gonna cost. And, and that was out the door, that's without that shelter, there are ten thousand.
Did you ask me how much the Brookside bathroom costs at the bar?
That's what we were told.
Twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Now, it's a little bit over what we were told and then that's the, and now we add ten thousand on that for a shelter.
Forty thousand dollars. And there's supposed to be seven thousand dollars in here for a sprinkler system.
Yep, that's up in, up there and it's actually six. Did you want me to highlight that?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's serious for pouring this much money into Brookside, there's not really a lot of signage pointing to Brookside Park. I've talked to a lot of tourists who come through, they don't even know it's there.
And that's where you get the best spots to get into the water.
Yeah.
So signage in that area.
So we might, we might consider putting a little more into the signage budget?
There's gonna be on that DOET, uh, at least that's what Nolan said, that's all supposed to be.
Are you away finding?
Yeah, it's supposed to, it's supposed to save Brookside Park.
But that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah.
They're for straightening the wall on the outside.
Yep. All right, so I have those two highlighted, do we wanna do anything with them now or do we wanna discuss that more when we come back on the fourth?
On that retaining wall, that twenty-three thousand?
Yep.
That's just, that's just not a concrete wall just for being there. That whole edge of that hill is caving in. You know, so that's a safety issue.
We're talking about getting some engineering comments on that, not just, you know, oh, those rocks look like they're gonna fall.
Yeah, but if we're gonna do something about it, we need to plan for it in the budget so that we can, so.
For me, the reason the twenty-five, the twenty-three, um, I wanna get a better understanding for it is the question has, the comment has been made to me is that where was the engineering put behind that estimate? You know, was there an engineer that?
Yeah, I think him.
Tracy, Tracy talked to us about it.
Thank you.
And he told us the, the design of the blocks and how it would be put in there. So.
That's, I, I hadn't.
Talked to Tracy, talked to Tracy.
The comment was put to me that it was the understanding of the person who talked with me that, um, the figure was come up with, the twenty-three thousand dollars was arrived at without any engineering behind it. So, you know.
Yeah, I talked to Tracy about that.
Okay. But that's why I just wanna have, twenty-three thousand dollars for a retaining wall sounds awful inexpensive. Especially when you look at what's needed down there.
And, and something else, you look at the Parks budget going back two thousand thirteen, what, a hundred and forty thousand dollars? And we're up to a hundred and sixty-three. Hundred and eighty-one one year, hundred and eighty-two. Uh, I can remember when Parks, you know, they got their money was left over from streets. It's great that they're getting money, but still, you know, this money's coming away from our streets and that's what we need to take care of and I think we need to take care of the parks. But do we need thirty or forty thousand dollars a year on the parks? I have a problem with that.
Keep in mind that we're trying to get that hundred and four thousand dollars down to zero.
Right.
They're as close to it as possible.
These are all worthwhile things to look at and to plan for. But reflect back on what you have got to have. Should be prioritized over what you would like to have.
That's right.
Should be prioritized over what would be nice to have at some point in the future. And I'm, and, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, please don't misunderstand me, because I, I think it's, it's vital for a community to have well-developed park systems, to have well-developed infrastructure. But unless you have the revenue to back that up, how important, how important is it to continue to run into a deficit to finance that? You've either, you've either gotta come up with more sources of revenue to pay for that or you may have to put some of those things on, on the back burner for now.
That's a good point.
And remember.
You've, you've gone to the max on your, on your, um, you've gone to the max on your property tax request. Am I, am I correct? So, that's all the money you're gonna get from property taxes.
For this year.
For thi- for, for this year. Uh, for eight, for, for sales taxes, I mean, who knows?
Remember we were putting this together and at the beginning of the meeting yesterday, told you what we tried to do here was give you, um, the bu- to let you see the budgets that these departments were requesting. So I absolutely agree, there's room to cut, there's things that we're gonna have to make those tough decisions on. What do we have to have, what do we wanna have, what would be nice to have? What we tried to do when we were going out to these departments is try to get as many of the things as they were requesting to get done for this year or that their committees planned to get done in the next year on here. But it's definitely, uh, expected that you look at this and you analyze it and you use those same thought processes when you're proving it.
Can I make one other suggestion? Let's go through the remainder of what we've got for the expenses. In the interval, prior to the net, to the meeting next Wednesday, it might be a good idea for everybody to go through this budget and decide, is this something that we need to do now for two thousand and eighteen? Versus how badly do we wanna have a hundred and four thousand or a hundred thousand dollar deficit? Plus, come up with money to give away?
We're down to eighty-six thousand, but, um, yeah, good point. So we have.
The other part of that too, that we, you know, we need to look at, and what we talked about in the initial meeting. There are certain things that we have to, we have to supply. And that comes out of that six million dollars. And what we're dealing with now with Parks is quality of life. But we also have quality of life in golf courses that we fund, Evans Plunge that we fund. And, uh, you know, what percentage do we want to allocate for that quality of life? And what percentage do we wanna allocate for those things that we, we need to do? And, uh, obviously, uh, there's been a cry that we need to increase the amount of streets that we maintain. We have an investment this year, a small investment, to try to give another ten or fifteen years of life to a street that's in relatively good shape. But we've got others that are gonna require more repair. We're also facing twenty-twenty huge deficit in, potential deficit in income in our sales tax revenue that will impact us also in our quality of life. Possibly from Evans Plunge that will impact us, so.
It's true, isn't it?
So those are, are things in the big picture that, you know, we need to, we need to look at. We have made a very significant input into our Parks Committee, we've had, into our Parks, because we've had a very aggressive Parks Committee and those, uh, increases have benefited, uh, the community. But, but, uh, you know, we've got some potential tough times ahead and there's certain things that we have got to fund. Streets being one of them, obviously, uh, the, uh, you know, police. We've got a, a fire department that, you know, we need to maintain that funding for. And so, you know, those have kind of go along with, uh, with, you know, what you were saying. We need to, you know, maybe take a, a good look again at, you know, what we're doing and, uh, ensure that the percentage of, of, of what we're spending is, is improper. And I don't know what that percentage is, but.
And the city's been very aggressive about, uh, pursuing the bridge improvement, uh, grant funding. Uh, we authorized forty thousand dollars to go, you know, for the, uh, build-ready.
Ninety-one, wasn't that ninety-one thousand?
Was it ninety-one?
I think so.
So we, we know we're gonna be looking at, with the expenditure, our percentage was around four hundred thousand dollars. I think it's, it's kinda what was, was expected. So we've got that expenditure that we're gonna be looking for prior to twenty-twenty. But we, we, we've got some big expenditures coming up.
And that's a vital thing because that bridge is failing, it is, it is deteriorating. And, uh, that's our emergency connection. So.
So am I taking these out now or leaving them highlighted for future discussion? So am I taking these out now or leaving them highlighted for future discussion?
I think leaving them highlighted.
Okay. So this is our last one for tonight. This is our Mueller Center budget. We already went through libraries, so I skipped over libraries. Auditorium, Mueller Center, we have forty-four thousand, five hundred. Thirty-four, ten, two thousand, nineteen fifty, and ten-five. Chris, another one of those employees that was grandfather during the time that allowed us to pay more than just the employee insurance premiums. Unemployment, four hundred, one thousand for insurance. Three thousand for professional services. Again, that includes weed spraying, pest control, and carpet cleaning. Fourteen hundred for publishing. Two hundred for rentals. He had to rent a blower in two thousand sixteen because there was a water leak and some damage, so he thought two hundred would be enough. There's a big expense in Mueller Center, fifty thousand to replace the roof above the lobby area, a quote from Weathercraft. So that's a little over four, forty thousand.
There's no insurance involved in that?
Mm-mm.
That has been a continual problem for the last, at least, it's a very difficult.
Equipment repairs, six thousand. Twelve hundred for street and walkway, intends to improve the sidewalk panel, remove and replace behind the building. Twelve hundred for supplies.
Low on supplies. Sixteen percent this year. He spent two hundred and forty dollars out of fifteen hundred.
I think he's over though somewhere else and he intended to use some of that.
Where is that?
Or high somewhere else. Yeah, his, is it building, my eyes are boring. His, uh, equipment repairs or building repairs is up to ninety-five percent already. Equipment repairs is up to seventy-four percent. Minor tools is seventy-eight percent already this year, so I think that he's hoarding some of that budget to cover those. It is lower than last year. Two fifty for, uh, equipment for resales, pot for the vending machine, coffee service for renters. Seventy dollars for clothing, polos for staff. Sixty-four hundred in janitorial supplies. Thousand in minor tools. Six fifty in agriculture. Five hundred for gas, oil, and diesel. Two hundred for signs.
What is the gas, oil, and diesel for?
Mowers, weeders.
Snowboers.
Weeders.
Okay, just, uh, the Mueller Center portion of the snowmobile?
Yeah, that he does there himself, his own equipment.
Oh, okay.
Down sidewalks and stuff.
What was the, um-
Do you have this eleven down there?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, what's the eleven thousand this year?
For what?
Improve other than buildings? I don't see it up there.
Where? Yeah, it wasn't budgeted. Is that the, uh, sound equipment?
Oh, that's what it is.
Yeah, and you are appropriating how you cover that.
I think something that got paid by the South Dakota Foundation too.
Actually, we paid for all of it and then after the pageant, they gave us half. And so you'll see some of that coming from unassigned fund balance and some of it coming from donation from Miss South Dakota and then next year, the other half will be paid for by them.
Okay.
What was the money that Brian was discussing last night? For the lights and sound?
Pardon?
The lights he's threatening to take away from us?
Yeah, I don't, I've-
The money that Brian was discussing last night is to what the, what the pageant had given in improvements for lights and sound?
The sound, I'm aware of, but I'm not sure what the light-
You know, the lights they can take down if they want to, there, he said.
That was their expense?
Yeah.
All the spotlights.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I think that this is the cost of the sound system. I don't know where the lights would be in here.
I don't think we paid for that.
We didn't pay for that.
Oh.
That was their expense.
That's why, yeah.
That's why they said they could take them.
Oh, yeah, right.
We don't give them that five thousand.
We agreed to pay for them and then accept the sound to pay for it and then accept a donation from them for it. So we paid for it upfront and they donate half to us this year, the other half next year, but we get to keep it in the end.
When did they pay us, have they?
Uh, yes, we've collected, yep.
Yeah.
Brian got us a check for the first half after the pageant. I reached out to him and I had it within four or five days. And I have it as a reminder to try to collect it next year after the pageant as well. Uh, two hundred for computer software.
To try and collect?
Well, to, to request it. I had no problem collecting it, so that kind of came online. It's getting late. It wasn't identified though. Uh, one hundred and thirty-six thousand and thirty dollars is our total for the Mueller Center. And so we somehow saved another three thousand, so I can change our cash applied figure to eighty-six. Seven ninety-six, if I'm not getting too tired. And so that's what we have that we're working on. And we call it a deficit and again, cash, if I'd like to have a true structurally balanced budget, not have to have any cash applied, but when you look at some of the major things we're purchasing, capital improvements, one-time expenses, we've got two buildings getting major roof repairs. Uh, we've got a police vehicle we're buying, we're financing a street sweeper, we're looking at getting some new cars, so.
We're spending a lot of money.
Yeah, but those are one-time expenses, so. It's a big amount, yeah. So that's where we're at and I think this would be a great place to stop for the night.
And those capital expenses, we've all had to spend in two thousand and twenty.
And there was something also- Six, seven, you've got the six, seven for cash.
Yeah. Using savings.
What's the magic number of welcome hour in twenty? Just project how much revenue is being drawn?